Good evening. So I want to thank you for coming. If you had questions, I think you had an opportunity to fill out a card. If not, we still have some around. We'll try to get them in. And our moderator here this evening is Barbara Jagrowski from the Florida League of Women Voters, or the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast. So I want to thank you for coming this evening and moderating for us. I'd like to thank all you guys for coming this evening and thanking our candidates for putting up with all the questions and us staring at them. Kathy Demott, Lizette Kohler, Chris Posar, and Dan Rubino. And with that, I will turn it over to our moderator.
I know.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Barbara Jagrowski, your moderator for the Grant Valkyria Town Council Forum. Thank you to the candidates and the audience for participating this evening. The League is a nonpartisan organization that promotes informed and active participation in government. To further this goal, the League assists in registering voters and in getting information out to the public through the panels, forums, and debates. Candidate campaign literature may be placed in the back of the room there. And I have also brought some publications on the proposed Florida constitutional amendments. I think they're on the table with the goodies. Tonight's forum will spotlight four nonpartisan candidates for the town council, from which three will be elected. They are Kathy Landrum Demott, Lisette Kohler, Christopher Posar, and Dan Rubino. The format tonight will be, the candidates will be given two minutes for opening statements, two minutes for closing statements, and up to two minutes to answer each question. The timekeeper, sitting in the front there, Joe Fadden, will hold up a 15-second warning sign, nope, the 15 seconds has to show forward, prior to the expiration. That's for them, not the audience. And when that 15 seconds is over, the stop sign will show up. Questions from the audience will be written on cards, and I have loads of them, thank you. And all of the candidates may respond to each question asked. Even if it's only asked to one person, everybody can get an opportunity to ask, to answer. Mrs. Demott will begin with her opening remark, followed by Ms. Kohler, and so on. When it comes to the questions, the first question will go to Ms. Kohler, and then down the line, the second question will go to Mr. Posar. And that is it. So let me ask the first, oh no, opening statement. Let's start with Kathy Demott.
I have a question about this.
Already?
Well, the literature I got from students said the opening statements were three minutes. So I kind of, I may go over.
It does say three minutes.
It does say three minutes. But he's long-winded, so. Just want to warn you, is that okay with time?
Three minutes.
Okay, two minutes for closing. Okay.
Hi, I'm Kathy Landrum Demott. I've been on the town council since '06. I was one of the originals. This is my third time running. My first stint was two years, four years, and so I'm running for another four years. I'm a transplant from South Florida, born and raised in Miami, and I moved up here 11 years ago, almost 12 now, to be closer to my family. And after I moved up here, I was like, I don't know, it was so desolate up here, and now I'm like, now I feel like I'm in paradise. I love this place, so I understand why we all live here now. And the reason I am on the town council is because like, I'm a resident just like you guys are, and I want to keep it the way it is. I want to keep it rural. And I hope in the past six years that I've managed to help, have a little contribution to do that. We've worked very, very hard, tireless hours, as everybody knows. It's all volunteer. We don't get paid for this. So we're doing this out of our heart, because we love our town. And I hope that you'll let me continue to serve you well, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. This is Owen Wright. Thank you all for coming. I wanted to thank everyone for making this forum happen, and I'd also like to thank you, the residents, for attending and participating in your town government. It has been an honor and a privilege to represent you for the past four years. I appreciate your support and input. I hope I have been helpful to many of you, and I hope you're satisfied with the job I've done. During this year of so many other elections, you know, this little town election seems so unimportant, but really, this is the level of government that affects you the most, most directly, and it's also the level of government you can influence the most. So as you know, this council can tax you, they can change zoning that affects your property, and you know, make sure your ditches are cleaned. So it's important, this is important to you, and hopefully, you can, you need to choose your council members wisely, and hopefully, this forum will let you do that. And remember, your council members, like Kathy said, are your neighbors, and we're here, and we have phone numbers, emails, whatever, we're here to listen to you anytime. What I'd like to do, some of the significant accomplishments the town has done in the last six years, of which I've been a part. We continue to be debt-free. The town has significant funds for emergencies and has obtained donated land from the county for our community park and town hall site. And I recently worked with a great group of people selecting the equipment and laying out the play area. The town has avoided tax rate increases for the past four years, and I'll work hard to continue, make sure we can continue this. The comprehensive plan was completed and is now in place to protect our rural character and environment. This is why we incorporated, so that we can determine how our town grows. And my goal is to stay true to this document. When development requests come before me, it's very easy to say, okay, developer, we'll change. I'm going to stay very true to that document. We have a comprehensive study of our drainage system in the town. And so now we know which areas are most critical that we need to fix, so we can wisely spend our money. I encouraged council to adopt a complete streets policy that will guide the future improvement of our roads, so that can be, they can be safely used by walkers, joggers, equestrians, golf carts, and cyclists. And adopting this policy will also help us obtain grants to do this to our roads. I'm excited about the selection of Waste Pro, which started Monday. For our waste collection service, we were able to slightly reduce the cost, and we're promised service that is tailored for each resident. I will, and I'll be diligent to make sure this happens. In all the discussions we have in council, I try to bring forward your concerns and make decisions based on facts and relevant data. And I'm always willing to work with my colleagues on the council to come up with solutions that are fair to all. Uh-oh. My only agenda is that our rural, as our town changes, it changes in the way you want it to, that the town encourages small, unique businesses, and it remains financially healthy. I grew up in Brevard, and my husband Ray and I built a home in six, I'm going to finish, in Grant Valkyria sixteen years ago. Every day I drive out of town and return home, I'm reminded of why we moved here and why I'm so dedicated to preserving our little piece of Florida the way it should be. I would appreciate your vote in November, so that I can continue to work for you and for our town. Thank you.
You, Lizette?
Hi, I'm glad you guys came. Last night's meet and greet was dismal. There were three people that showed up, and this is a lot better. First of all, I'd like to say I've lived here in Grant Valkyria for 16 years. I've lived in Brevard for about 43 years. I grew up in O'Gally. I went to Croton, Johnson, then O'Gally High School. I recently purchased the old Grant grocery store down there, and I'll be opening up in a place called Grant Station. So I have a vested interest here in the town. I'm pro-development, but I'm also for well-planned development. And what we have in Grant is a very quaint fishing community, and I'd like to see it stay that way. The last thing I want to see is tacky development, especially on the main corridor coming through US-1. That's how people judge our town, as they're flying by at 60 miles an hour with no stop signs or a stoplight to stop them. I've realized since I've been here that the Grant store is the horn-blowing capital of the world, as people scurry to get off the road as they're practically run down, and nobody wants to stop. So I'm excited to be part of the council. I've been involved in some issues here in the town, and I feel like I've got a lot to offer. I've never been a politician. I've never run for an office before, so I'm a rookie. But I did retire at the age of 36 years old from a landscaping company. I had an office in O'Gally and an office in Orlando, and I had 62 guys that worked for me. I took 10 years off before I decided to buy the store, and I bought the store because I loved the store and I loved this town. So I hope that everybody here believes that I'm smart enough to be on the council, and that I can bring something to the table. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dan Rubino. I know most of you people out here. You've seen me around. I'm active in this community club and with the town since its inception. I have been on the planning and zoning board since the beginning of the town. I am now the vice chairman of the planning and zoning board and the LPA. We've already done the art portion of it and taken care of the LDRs, which have, we have gone through very diligently, and now it's in the hands of the council. And if elected to the council, I can bring all the stuff that we have already accomplished in the planning and zoning board and the LPA to the board, because we've already reviewed all these things once already. I've been here, a resident of the town for 16 years. We love this little town. It took us, it took us about three years to find this place when we searched for a place to move to, and when we found it, we bought the house that we wanted, and it's a little bit of paradise out here. So we're going to keep it that way, and that's what our plan is in the future, to make sure that this town stays the same way as it was when I moved into it. Thank you.
Thank you. The first question that we have is, what do you feel is the most important aspect of the town, and what will you do to preserve it? Ms. Kohler, you get the first question.
I think the most important aspect of the town is its rural character, and that's why we incorporated, that's what we incorporated to protect. We've already accomplished quite a bit in protecting that by adopting a comprehensive plan that defines the size lots, for instance, oh, the density, okay? So it's low density, and our commercial areas are clustered on US-1 and Babcock. Everything in between is residential. We have, the highest density we have is four homes to an acre, which really is, and it's, those are on Babcock and in some places where they already are there. So I think we've accomplished that. Now we have to be tested. When someone comes up with a development request, we have to be tested to see if we're going to be diligent to enforce that document. And I think it's a good document. Like Dan said, we've all worked on it for, ever since we started, we incorporated. So I will, like I said, I will be true to that document. It's a document you all, you know, had input into, and a lot of people took a lot of time to develop, and we think we have the town to find the way you want it to be, so I will be true to that document. Thank you.
Oh, you want me to answer the same question? As I said, I want to keep it a rural fishing community, and I think that any development that happens, we need to hold it to a certain standard, especially when it's on the corridor like US-1. If we're going to be a cracker-style town, then that's what we need to portray in everything that's new, that's built on US-1. I mean, everything should have maybe a metal roof. Everything should have the country cracker look. I mean, you can go across America, which I have several times, and you can find really cool little towns. And those little towns are all developed with some class. You know, they hold their builders to a standard, and then those standards are met. I hope I don't step on anybody's toes, but one of the things that I see is where the town hall is now. I personally find that building to be one of the ugliest buildings in Brevard. In fact, I could probably drive down to Fort Pierce and then drive all the way back up to Daytona and not see something as ugly as that building. I hate to say that, and I hope the builder's not here, but that is one ugly building, and I just don't want to see anything like that in our town, and then we're leasing it out for a town hall. Kind of bothers me a little bit. I'd like to see everybody held to a higher standard than that. Thank you.
Oh, I go first, okay. You're giving me that permission? Oh, thank you. All right. Our vision for this town was to keep this town a rural community. It was a rural community when we started here. It has the old fish town, fishing town, village type of construction. It's never been an organized type of construction in our town. We have all different types and styles of stuff along our highways and stuff. That, I think, is one of the things that makes it quaint, what it is. It's what it is. It's what was here when we came here. It's what we say we want to preserve, and it's what we want to keep. It's not something that we want to, we don't want our town to become a cookie-cutter town. We don't want our town to be like every other town that says it's a fishing village, and it looks cookie-cutter buildings, cookie-cutter houses. Our town is designed to be an individual town, and that's like it was. It's been founded for many, many years. It's been here long before any of us were here. If you read the history of the town, they used to have a horse and wagon drive kids to school. This is the way our town was, was, and was formed, and I would like to see our town stay that way, with the large lots and the houses separated, so that everybody has the freedom to be and do what they want in our town.
Well, obviously, the goal of all of us, I think, is to keep the rural nature. I think that's what we're hearing from all of us, and I too feel that way as well. And I do think we've been very diligent in trying to maintain that throughout the last six years as best that we can. We have not raised your taxes, our taxes, and we've tried to keep everything as rural as we can. We're going to end up with development. We know that. We know it's coming down the road. The business is starting to pick up now with building, and I'm hoping that we can hopefully find a happy medium between like, low-density commercial, you know, a small business, like, for instance, like what Chris is doing now. That's kind of what we want in our town. If I have anything to say about it, there will never be a Walmart, there'll never be a shopping center, hopefully, no more gas stations like we have, the Chevron station. I wish we could have had something to say about the way that was built. And as Chris pointed out, a lot of the buildings, you know, we're not happy with the architecture. Unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do. We were very fortunate when Honda was going to redo the building, that they came to us and we actually were a part of developing that bill, you know, the style of that building, the old Florida kind of style. So I hope that we can continue to work with businesses in that sense, that when they want to open up a low-density business here, that we can work with them with the architectural part of it, and hopefully, soon, the council will be able to work on an architectural ordinance and get some, you know, get some rules in place for it, but we'll do the best we can to keep it the way it is.
All right, thank you. The next question goes to Mr. Posar, and you touched on it. What do we have to do to get a stoplight at US-1 and First Street?
That's a great question. I know that in the works for 2014, we're going to have a turn lane there. I'm sure once the business opens there, a stoplight will be coming soon after that. And there needs to be a stoplight there, because we're coming from Harris, which they rarely catch red, all the way down to Miko is the Autobahn. I mean, they're opening it up, and they're flying by going 80 miles an hour all day long, because there's nothing to slow them down, and people know that they're going to make up some time there. So there at that intersection, there's people constantly crossing the road, walking back and forth, so a stoplight's necessary just to get a crosswalk in there. I'm scared for every single person that crosses the street there, and there's probably 20 people a day walking back and forth, you know, from the island to Tony's Fish Market and soon becoming the Grant Station. It's definitely needed, so I'm 100% in favor of that. Thank you.
We have talked about a stoplight there for, since the town was formed. We have very little control over when that stoplight will be put in. That is up to the Florida Transportation Department. They determine where stoplights will go and when they will go in. Unfortunately, they calculate that by how many people are killed at an intersection and how many accidents occur there. And believe it or not, there are very few accidents at that corner, and there, I don't believe there's ever been a death there. So we can ask. We have done it before, and we can ask again, but until the state decides that they want to put a stoplight up there, all we can do is ask, and we will continue to do so.
I guess I'm probably going to reiterate what Dan and Chris both said. We hate to see any stoplights in town. You kind of feel like it messes up your rural character, but we also have to think of the safety, too, of everyone. And if it eventually comes to that, then that's what's going to happen. I do believe we've been told that there's not enough traffic flow through there to warrant a stoplight. So possibly, when Grant Station opens and we have more business in that little hub there where the station and all that is, it's going to warrant a light. And we will monitor that. I mean, again, the state are the ones that determine that, because that is a state road there. But again, the council, I think, will do their best to monitor that and make sure that, you know, it's truly needed, and we'll fight and do what we can.
I agree with everybody. When I get to that intersection, I always, most of the time, I'll turn right and then do a U-turn and go in the other way, so I can at least only deal with traffic going one way. But it is a bad intersection, and there's people walking. But as Dan said, it's not up to the town. It will take a study by FDOT, and I think Rick, in one of his recent reports, when he went to the TPO and talked to the FDOT, and he put forward that that is one thing that they need to consider here. So it is on the table to be considered, and as everyone else said, the council will definitely look at it. I understand that intersection is very nasty, but we'll work and see what we can do with the state, because they do tend to wait till somebody, you know, gets hurt before they put a, and I know, if you know the boat ramp, Rick went and fought for us to get a turn lane into the boat ramp. FDOT didn't want to do that going north, so they're hard to deal with, but we will, you know, we will be diligent in making sure everyone's safe there.
Thank you. Mr. Rubino, you get the next question. Do you or have you ever volunteered for the town, and if so, explain what you do or did?
Two minutes. You have the rest of the night, so. That's a very good question. I have, for most of the people out here know, that for five years, I ran the road repair crew with my good friend Bob there and a couple other fellas, and we repaired every pothole and fixed every sign in the town for five years, with, kept the roads in excellent condition. That is just one of the things I volunteer for. I also have been, like I said, I've been on the planning and zoning board from the very beginning and the LPA. I volunteer here at the town, at the town's community center. I used to sit on the board of the community center. I do all, a lot of the work here. So I volunteer for everything in this town, and I will continue to do that as long as I can keep functioning.
Notice we all chuckled, because this whole town is based on volunteerism. That's the wonderful thing about it. I too have been a volunteer for six years, I guess you might say, because I've been on the town council. And we don't get paid for this. We do this because we want to, so it's volunteerism at its best, I think. You know, and I volunteer to do various things throughout the town when things come up, and oh, I'll help do that, or let me check into that, see what I can do, let me collect this, collect that. So I think we all kind of have that mentality here, and I hope we can keep that volunteerism in the town, because that's one reason we've been able to keep your taxes down, because we had someone like Dan doing the roads, and now we have Joe helping out with that, and that's how we've managed to keep a lot of the costs down in the town. So it's, I think everybody's a volunteer in this town. Thank you.
I think most of you know, I was co-chair of the committee that incorporated the town, so that was a two-year effort of volunteer. I was on the interim council that got the town on its feet. I served on the council for the past four years. As Kathy says, that's a big volunteer effort. See, I spearheaded the town newsletter. I got that going now. Jessica does a great job with it. I spearheaded the Grant Valkyria Day and the Christmas tree lighting. These are things I wanted to do to get the community involved. I still do the website, which is sometimes not do well, but it's there. I did establish a civic group from the leftovers of the incorporation committee. We have a civic group that raised funds for the town, the Grant Valkyria Community Association. We contributed to the town seal, to the welcome signs you see up and around town now. We buy the Christmas tree every year for the town. I encouraged and, well, that's something else. But I also served on the planning and zoning board. I was chair of that while we were doing the comprehensive plan. So I've been very, very involved since, in the town since day one, and even before that, I was very involved with going to the county for their, when they were doing zonings and things like that that would affect us down here. I was always at the county commission meetings. I worked closely with the folks in Miko. So I've been involved, I would say, since 2004, really, really involved in this community and trying to just to keep it the way it is, to keep condos out, to keep high-density developments out, to keep a lot of commercial out. So I'm, like I said, I volunteer all the time, and I do love this town very much, and I enjoy doing it, and I enjoy working with you all. Thank you.
My volunteerism has come in trash patrol. I go out to the islands, and I take approximately five to 10 55-gallon drum bags full of trash off those islands on a regular basis. I walk the river every morning near Valkyria Road. I haul 55-gallon bags of trash off that beach on a regular basis. I pick up the trash along Valkyria Road. I'm constantly stopping at Valkyria Road and US-1 picking up trash, because the last thing I want to see driving through this town is trash, and there is a lot of trash laying around. I can go up and down many roads right now, and I see TVs, I see old chairs, I see old washing machines, I see trash. That's one thing I'm going to strive towards, is seeing no more trash, because when you see trash, you think trash. And I don't want people driving through Grant Valkyria thinking it's trash. I want them to drive through, see in a clean town, and that's where I put in a lot of time. And I also run my mower all over the place. I'm now maintaining all the way over here to First Street and Old Dixie, all the way from the store. I maintain the railroad tracks, both sides. I don't know if anybody's noticed, it's been a slow progression, but it was a stye when I got there, and now I've pretty much got it looking good to the intersection. And before anybody stops me, I'll go a little further. Thank you.
Ms. Demott, you get the next question. What is your opinion of the quality of service provided by the sheriff's department? How would you improve it?
Well, I think the quality of the sheriff's department is remarkable, really, considering that I think there's two deputies for like, a humongous area. I mean, it's amazing that we only have two. They do more than just the South County. So unfortunately, there's just not the manpower there, but I think the ones that we do have that are able to come to our town do the best that they can do. We do have representatives from the sheriff's department deputies that do try to come to our meetings, try to keep us abreast of what's going on. They listen to the residents. He writes things down. He gets back with us. We've been getting a monthly report now of all the crimes, things that are going on, reports, 911 calls, that sort of thing that go on in town. So they're keeping us abreast of it. Would I like to see more presence of the sheriff here? Absolutely. But unfortunately, we have no control over, you know, the hiring of sheriff deputies. We have to take, you know, the best that we can, and we are not financially sound enough to have our own police department, so we have to rely on the county sheriff. And like I say, unfortunately, we, you know, just have to do with. And like I say, unfortunately, we, you know, just have to do with what we have. But I do think they've done their very best. I mean, every day when I go to work or come home, I see a sheriff's deputy on our roads. So I know they are, they are down here. They're trying their best. And they have the South Precinct close by. So hopefully they'll, maybe with a new sheriff and new, I don't know if there's going to be the funds to hire more, but hopefully they will.
I think, I think as Kathy said, when we need the sheriff, I think they're here. They respond. They help, they're very helpful. They do keep us informed. I would like to see more presence also. I would like to see more enforcement of speed limits. There's folks that want to use our roads, our quiet residential country roads to walk, to ride their bikes, to ride their horses. And the speeding is just keeping them from doing that. So I would like to see a little bit more concentrated enforcement. And we've talked to them. We've told them, come intermittently and, you know, give out some tickets and, you know, go away. And then, and just try to get people to slow down. If they, if folks know that Grant Road and Valkyria Roads are not speedways because there's a sheriff there once in a while, it'll get better. But other than that, other than some of the enforcement of the speeding on our roads, I think they've done a great job. They're great to work with. Our COPs, our citizens on patrol, I'm sure you all have seen them and know of them, are great. They're probably the best in the county and they work closely with the sheriff. I think we've had great response from them. The only thing I think I would like to see is more enforcement on speed limits.
Vince? Community, oh, he's not here. Community control is pretty much all I see. I like to see those old boys, the sheriffs, get out of their car more. My experience is with the sheriffs, haven't been that good. I reported several things and nothing was done. I'd like to see more out of them. And I'll strive to get more. So I'm not going to lace it like it's great because it is not great. So we can work towards it being better.
My experience with the sheriffs is limited to what we see at the town hall. And I see them coming, patrolling the streets regularly. They're always about. They set up their speed radar detector when, whenever we have some complaints from citizens and we give it to them, they come down and set up a speed area. I know that they're unstaffed. They have only a couple of men patrol here. But everybody in the county has the same. It's not like we're being picked on or anything. They have the same problem all over the entire county. There just aren't enough sheriffs to cover everything all the time. That's why we have COPs that go out and drive around and keep an eye on things. But in general, I think our town is pretty well protected. I don't see any major crimes of any kind in our town. And they get quick, we get pretty quick response whenever there is anything and the sheriffs are needed. They do respond pretty quickly. So all in all, I think they do a fairly decent job. And I have nothing bad to say about them because I think they're doing as best they can.
Ms. Kohler, do you feel the town's staffing level is adequate? Or do we need to make more cuts and additions?
Probably our level of staff is not adequate. They work as much as 10 people, I'm sure. But they're willing to do that. We need to do that to keep our costs down. I don't know, I don't think we should cut anything. I mean, I can't imagine cutting one of our staff. I think, I think we're, because we have the people who we have, we've been fortunate enough to have those particular people. We're doing fine. Hopefully, we need to hear from you if you're not getting a good response when you call town hall. But I've never heard anything like that. I know Rick and the, and Jessica and Sue always respond as quickly as they can. I think, you know, Rick is willing, he has no plans to add new staff. He's willing to work the way he is and it's working fine. We just, we absolutely adore them. They're great. They're so easy to work with. I don't see a need to increase and definitely not cut. Because they do work, like I said, like at least 10 people. And so we really appreciate them. And for now, it's just great. So it is keep reducing the cost of the town.
I think, I think it's adequate. My dealings with the town have gone smooth, friendly. If I think one area that could be improved, I think the town of Grant Valkyria should have its own building inspector so we can keep the county out of it. I think that would be the smartest thing that we could do. And he doesn't have to just do inspecting. He can do other things as well. So if we wanted to expand anywhere, that's where we should expand.
I'm quite familiar with our, with our staff. Our staff has been with us for quite a while now. They are, as far as I'm concerned, very overworked. They are work, they work harder than any other people I know in any other political office anywhere else. We have three people on our staff and a part-time man. So that's four, three and a half people. And quite honestly, the only thing I can see is that in the future, we are going to have to get them some more help eventually. Because the town is growing. As the town grows, there are going to be more things that need to be done. And that's, we will not be cutting staff. The only thing we have to do is, in the future, we'll have to watch out where we have to go and increase our staff.
I too think our staff right now is adequate. I can't say enough about the staff that we have. They've been unbelievable. Rick, as our town administrator, has saved this town so much money, it's unbelievable. He does our site plans, collects, you know, when people have fees that they have to pay. Everyone was going to the county to do that before. And so with Rick on board, we're able to keep a lot of the stuff in-house that was going to the county before. And for the council, I think it helps us keep a better hold on what's going on. Like I say, Rick has just been amazing. He's got that engineering background that, you know, he knows what needs to be done. And I know that they clip coupons in that office to save the town money for office supplies and things. You can't ask for better people than that. Right now, I do think it's adequate. But as stated before, you know, the town is going to grow. We are going to, it's just inevitable that it's going to. So we are going to have to think about more staff. But right now, I think the three and a half that we have is ample. And I don't really see that growing much in the next couple of years.
I have two questions here that have to do with the airport. And I think they're both pretty much the same. Although activity at Valkyria Airport greatly impacts the residents on the north end of town, the county supports the legal opinion that the surrounding town has no control of growth and development there. How would you, as a council member, address the concerns of your citizens? And that goes to Mr. Poser.
It's funny, I should get the airport question first. I'd like to see the town get control of the airport instead of the county. Because the county doesn't care about the town or what the residents think. I think the town cares about the residents. And the town should have the final say in what goes on at that airport. It's a touchy subject for me. And I'm going to leave it at that. Because I could rant here for about 15 minutes, but I won't. Thank you.
Subject to the airport has been a thing that's been discussed and discussed and discussed in our town. We have tried everything, the town has tried everything it can. The council has diligently worked with everybody and connected with the airport. And we still, Mr. Fadden, or one of our council members, is still working with, trying to work with the people from the, trying to work with the people from the airport. We have no, absolutely no legal standing with the airport. We are not able to do anything legally, to do anything at the airport. The only thing we can do is work with them and try to get their cooperation in any way we can. And they do not have to cooperate with us in any way at all. They have been told that they are a separate little island in the middle of our town and that we have absolutely no control over what is done at the airport. It is all the county. And the only thing we can tell people is, please, try to go to the county and do as best you can with the county. And we will continue to do what we are doing, trying to work with the people at the airport.
Well, I too know this is one of the biggest issues in our town. It's been a huge, huge, the one on our side for, since the council started anyway, for six years that I know of. And I know it was a long history before that. We did countless hours, I can't even count them, of meetings and workshops and trying to resolve all these problems. Finally had to get a ruling from the attorney general as to what our boundaries were. And we found out that we're just, we are really corralled on this. There's just not a whole lot we can do because, you know, between the county and FAA, there's just not a lot we could do. But we have tried to, you know, we have Dan as our personal representative. We have tried to work with them as best we can. Unfortunately, it hasn't been reciprocated to us. And it's very disappointing. As far as the town acquiring the airport, I'm not really sure that'll ever happen. I don't know if the county would ever give that up. But I don't see that happening for this town for a number of years. I mean, we're still a baby town. We really are. We're still a young government. And we have a lot of things to do. And that is a huge, huge undertaking for this town to run an airport. And maybe in the future, that can happen. But I don't see that happening anytime soon.
Kathy said everything I was going to say. I agree. I don't think that right now is the time to acquire that airport, if ever. If ever the Brevard County or FAA would allow it. So, but if the time ever came and we had the finances and we were, you know, the town was able to do it, it'd be something to consider. But right, like Kathy said, it's going to be many years before we can do that. And again, I want to iterate, you know, we sat in a meeting, it was in here, I believe, where, I don't know, hundreds of people came from all over the country to tell us how out of our minds we were to try and, and change zoning and control zoning at the airport. We were called all kinds of names on all kinds of newspapers and websites. What did they call us? The clown council? You know, it was not a fun experience. But we tried because we wanted to represent the folks that have the trouble with the airport. We wanted to do something for them. We tried. We found out, like Kathy said, from the attorney general, there's a state statute that says if there's an airport in a municipality and it's owned or sponsored by another municipality or the county, that host town has no jurisdiction at all whatsoever, including zoning. So we learned what our limits are. And we've been trying, trying and trying at every level of the county government to get them to work with us. It hasn't worked. All we can do is keep trying and encourage the residents to take, you know, actions in their own hands. There's a lot that residents can do. I hate to say it, you can file lawsuits. You can get the newspaper involved. There's lots of things the residents can do and I think the council would support them. You know, if some newspaper came and interviewed the council, I think we'd support you in saying we are not getting any cooperation. So right now, that's all we can do. And it's not that we haven't. We continue to try. So again, that's where we stand right now. And we really can't acquire the airport right now, the stage the town is in.
Mr. Rubino, you get the next question. What two things would you like to accomplish as a member of the town council?
Just two. Okay. Two things we want to accomplish. One of the first things I'd like to see us do is start to maintain the roads a little bit better. We have several roads in town that need some work. So that. And now that we have, now that we have our master drainage plan, I'd like to see us continue to keep working on all the points that the plan has shown as the points that need to be taken care of right now. And start to work on those and get those taken care of. And continue to do that and continue to keep our budget all, at the same time.
That's the answer. There's a whole bunch of stuff. There's a huge bucket of stuff that we want to do. But I think a couple of the main things I'd like to do is absolutely maintain the fiscal responsibility of the town and keep the town solvent. That's always been one of our goals. And I think we've managed to do that. And I want to continue to try to, you know, to do that, to work diligent to do that. And the other thing is, as I mentioned before, the, you know, the architecture of the town. I do see a lot of houses now being built. And I see that things are starting to boom a little bit around. So I do want to try to accomplish that, to get some architectural guidelines for the town. And so that we can prevent these huge cement buildings from being built.
I would like to, I think what's real important now is our land development regulations. We've started on them. The LPA completed. What those are, are really the rules and regulations that are put on different types of zoning. We have those in place right now from the county. But we want, we've looked at a few of them and changed them to more fit our lifestyle. Like we allowed larger buildings on acre lots with some conditions. We allowed home businesses to do more things than they used to. So, and those are all land development regulations. We have a lot more of those to go through. And, you know, it's a long slog to get through those, to tailor them to what folks here in town want to do. Because right now, they're tailored to the county. So that's one of the things I think is important for the next four years. And it was funny that, we just talked about the airport. One of my things, goals, is to develop a working relationship with the county. Some type of relationship, just keep at it until we finally make them understand they need to work with us. Because they, we do pay some people salary that work at that airport. And, you know, and those county commissioners represent us. So they need to listen to us. And somehow, I think, I just want to keep working on that. I do, now that we have the park, I want to do more things to promote the community coming together. And, you know, those are fun things. And I, you know, got all kinds of ideas there. So, and I do want to do a little bit more supporting our local businesses. You know, we have some ideas on what to do. I want to help them develop a directory, maybe a little directory that you can all put your, you know, business name in and publish it and send it out throughout the town, things like that. I think we need to help the businesses. So those are the three things. And obviously, always monitor the budget. But Rick does such a good job on that, that I don't ever have to worry. But it is something we're very cognizant of. And to keep our taxes the way they are, no raising taxes and keeping the budget, and keeping us within budget.
Well, that's a tough one, to narrow it down to two things. But I know what our area needs. And it's not just for Grant Valkyria. This part of the county needs a causeway that goes to the beach. I want to be a spokesperson for that causeway. You know, Palm Bay has the largest population in Brevard County. Not only that, they have the most land in Brevard County. And they don't have access to the beach. Now, my house sits within two miles of the ocean, but it takes me 45 minutes to get there. If we had access to the beach, whether it was at MICO Road or Malabar Road, everything else for this town will fall into place. Because we will be fed people and activity. And the state of the economy in Brevard is possibly the worst in the country. And that's not the state of Florida, that's the country. So it's not just a problem for this little town. It's a problem for southern Brevard. And they've been talking about this causeway since the 1920s. There's been federal money on the table since the 1960s. It's time to go forward and build this causeway. Because we all live in Florida for the beach. And I want to be able to get there without spending $50 in gas. Thank you.
Ms. Demart, you get the next, excuse me, the next question. ATVs are running roughshod over the Eels' land and private property. How do you feel about this statement? Do you have a resolution?
Well, I certainly agree. And this has been an issue for the six years that I've been on the council. I get it in my own area as well. The mini bike, the dirt bikes and the ATVs as well. So I totally understand. They tear the fence down. Every time the fence is put back up again, it's torn down again. We've actually gone out there ourselves. And I live on the End of Berry Road and on sapling there, we've put the fence back up ourselves and it gets torn down again. We've tried to work with the sheriff on it. I think they're a little... I think they're a little bit more astute, a little bit more aware now of what's going on in some of the areas in Valkyria. We had some residents talk to us about that. We discussed putting up some signs because I guess they're bringing their trucks in and loading their ATVs and having a field day out there. It's real hard to enforce because they take off into the woods. And the sheriff can't sit there for hours until they decide to come out of the woods. I know they have an ATV on the force, and they've tried to go in there. But it's an ongoing issue, and we've tried to work with it. And I will continue, of course, to try to do the best that we can and try to get this thing done. We've put gates up, we've done all kinds of things, but we'll just continue to work for it.
Yeah, the statement, that statement upsets me a lot. Those lands out there were purchased by everyone in Brevard County to protect, and ATVs destroy. And, and they also make noise that people don't like. We know, we know all about what they do. We know that the sheriff cannot do much about it, or does not, or just can't. I mean, I don't know if they can't, they won't, but they, you know, we've offered to buy them an ATV. They've got ATVs, I think, from Fish and Wildlife. They don't have the, they don't have the resources. They've, they sat at a meeting and told us they considered that a nuisance, it's not a crime, it's just a nuisance. And we did have some robberies with people on ATVs going around robbing. So, it's all kinds, it causes all kinds of problems. And we're fortunate to have those lands out there, but, you know, that's the other side of it, is we, you know. And I understand that folks that lived here for a long time and were out there and made all those trails and enjoy doing that stuff, I understand where they're coming from. But, you know, they have to understand why those lands are there, and it's tough. It's such a tough issue. We do what we can when we get complaints, we call the sheriff, we get them to go out there. We try as much as we can, and it's another one of those issues like the airport. It's just something we have to constantly be working on. And it's not like the council doesn't know. If you folks have problems, please come to us. I mean, we try as best we can. So, we'll just keep working with you.
I made a bunch of them trails out there. I got four-wheelers. That's part of living in the country, I think. I live on a dirt road, I see four-wheelers on a daily basis. Maybe, you're never gonna stop people from wanting to come down here and go four-wheeling. Maybe we should take some of this land and designate it for the four-wheelers so they stay off the eel's property. We already allow them on the side of the roads. I mean, the worst thing that they can do is fishtail and do donuts in the road after they grade it. I mean, that's the worst. Trust me, if we're living on a dirt road, they get done grading it, and you're so happy. And these, these people come down there and start doing donuts and fishtails, and it's like you're going over speed bumps at the mall. I mean, it's awful. I know the pros and the cons. But I do think it's, four-wheelers are part of country life. I mean, maybe we should try to work with them a little bit, give them an area that they can ride, and maybe they'll stay out of the property that we don't want them on. That's maybe a way to approach it. Thanks.
Well, I can't disagree more with him. All right? The people who live in town, who have four-wheelers, I think are more respectful of the land than the people who truck their four-wheelers in from out of our town. We've got people coming from all over, different towns, bringing four-wheelers into our towns. We've blocked the roads, we've done all kinds of things. And it's not that they stay on the dirt trails, they go into the eel's land and they destroy the wetlands. They destroy everything, and they leave trash and garbage behind. We've had people who gated the places go out there and take out truckloads of trash that these people leave in there. They're slobs. Four-wheelers are like young gangsters. You try to stop them, and they threaten you. They've threatened some of our residents already, and we've got residents that are afraid to call the police because they don't want the four-wheelers to come and take retribution against them. We've, you know, and the police have tried the best they can, the sheriffs, and they have tried. But these guys go out there, they come in, and they disappear. We're, we've made some suggestions about putting some no parking signs up so that when they park their trailers and stuff, the police can ticket them and maybe even tow them. But these are the things that we're gonna have to do, and we're gonna have to be tough. If the people live in town and own property and have four-wheelers and respect the lands that they're driving on, it's their land, and that's okay, as long as they don't go out there and destroy what the rest of us enjoy. And that's what's happening with these four-wheelers. These four-wheelers are, and the people who ride them, generally speaking, have no respect for anybody or any, or the people of private property, and they have no respect for the people who own the property. So, no, I have to disagree. Four-wheelers are a bad thing, and we're gonna keep on fighting against them as long as we have a council.
Ms. Kohler, you get the next question, and there's two kind of alike. Excuse me. What is an issue that is close to your heart that you would like to dedicate time and your efforts, efforts to, that you feel is the, to the benefit of Grant Valkyria residents?
Something that's near to my heart is I have this vision of Grant Valkyria, of a town where folks can ride their bikes, take their golf carts, take their horses, and go to the, to our new park, come to the grocery store, get an ice cream. I would love to see people walking everywhere. My kind of vision of the town is just a place where you come home and you get out and enjoy what we have. And in doing that, you can, you can go all over the place. So, my, my thing that I would like to work on is the complete streets, get that going so that when we do widen roads, and I realize it's gonna take a long time. And Rick has taught me to be patient, that I have to be patient. And, and I know it's gonna be a long time that we can do, but that's something I want to work towards. So, because I have this, I have this vision. I've been to Vero Beach before, and on weekends, I see people out everywhere. And this is a different type of city. It's a city with city blocks and things. But people are out everywhere because they have a safe place to walk or ride a bike, or, you know, and here would be golf carts and horses, and, you know, the touring bikes, the street bikes, those gaggle of guys that come through here. I would love to see them. I think it's, it's great, but we just have to work with them and give them room and learn, have them learn the traffic rules. But, that's my, that's my vision, and that's what I'd like to work on, is the complete streets and giving our folks a way to get around the whole town, not using their car.
I'm gonna go back to the causeway. Nothing can benefit this town more than a causeway. Nothing can stimulate the economy in this county more than a causeway. You know, they're talking about an interchange out at Miko Road, more expansion, going out further. They're talking about a heritage parkway that goes out in the middle of nowhere, more expansion. We don't need to expand, we need to fill up our infrastructure. There's nothing more at the heart of infrastructure than a causeway. Build the causeway, and everything else will fall into place.
Well, my vision of this town is basically a town that stays very much like it is today, and it'll be this way for the next generation to come in and have the same kind of things that we have in this town now. Have the freedom of having your property and being able to do what you want, and to be able to continue to live your lifestyle as the style you want to live it in. It's a vision to see this town, after years of development and stuff, still maintain this way. To see the development that is done in this town, keep it, it's kept the way the town is now, to keep the same type of atmosphere about the town for as long as possible.
I think what's close to my heart is, it's really the rural nature of this town. As I said before, I came from South Florida, and there's no other place that's more concrete than Miami. I can tell you that, growing up there. I grew up on a nursery with a lot of acreage, but that changed very quickly when I grew up. And close to my heart is this town, and maintaining the rural nature of this town and controlling our growth, but also helping the town to prosper with that, too. And I think that we just can, continue to do our due diligence to try to make our streets safe, as Lizette said, with the complete streets, because I love seeing the horses out walking. And I, I have a golf cart, I love riding my golf cart around, but it's, it's a little scary sometimes. And I hope we can, can try to maintain that. You know, I work in Palm Bay, and when I drive down my street and I come home, it's like, as soon as I turn down my dirt driveway, it's like, wow, I'm home, it's paradise. It's so quiet and peaceful, and I want to keep that for every single resident in this town.
Mr. Poser, you get the next question first. How do you think the current council is doing, and what decisions would you have made differently?
I think the council's done a great job. I love the direction that the town is going in. Originally, I think the town could have had the option of having control of the airport. That's something I would have done differently, because now we don't have control. I hope to get involved. There's not a whole lot of things that I would have done differently. I think they're doing a great job. And, I mean, these people are volunteering their time, and I think the town's proven the point. I mean, they're running with no deficit, and we're moving forward. They're doing things, a new town hall in the park, things are looking good. I like what the town's done.
I think our town council has done due diligence to this town. These people are volunteers, nobody gets a penny here, and I think they put in a lot of time, a lot of effort. I think we all put in a lot of time, a lot of effort to this town. And I don't, I don't see anything that we could have done that would have been more, I don't know, just more, you know? We've done everything we can, and we're gonna continue to do everything we can to keep the town, and our council does an excellent job.
Well, I too, being on the council, of course, think they've done a great job. But no, I truly do, I truly think they've done a great job. You know, we've had our ups and downs, but through all of it, not, not a single one of us walked out or yelled at another one, or we've all just gotten along really well. And we've had a few different council members over the six years, most of the time. We've had a few different, you know, council members over the years. So, we've all just managed to get along, and I think that every single person that sits on the council or future council has this, this town in their heart. That's why we live here. And I think that they would all do their due diligence, no matter who they are.
I too think the council's done a great job. I've only been on it for four years, but it's been, it's been great working with them, and it's a great experience. I hope you all take a turn someday. I can't see anything we've done, any big thing we've done wrong. I would say maybe our last mowing contractor wasn't the best, but I think Rick has, Rick has fixed that. And, and one thing I was, it's a disappointing thing to not be able to deal with that airport. Not, you know, not, I never intended to take it over, but it's disappointing that we can't develop a working relationship with them. That, that's a disappointing thing, and that is not our council's fault at all. So, you know, I, I continue to want to keep doing that. Again, like Kathy said, the council gets along great. We work hard, and we do tend to spend a lot of time to make a decision. But, you know, you know, what are you gonna do on a Wednesday night? There's no football. So, you know, we're there a long time and discuss, and we, and we discuss, and we discuss. Sometimes people think we discuss too much, but, you know, there's a few of us that are maybe detail people that want to know everything about a topic. And, you know, in the end, it's good. It's good for, it's good for the town to have those types of discussions. And I'm glad that, that we have smart people and people that are willing to take the time to make, do those discussions. And also, the folks that come to these meetings, we have, you know, our regular crew that comes, they're, they're just as much a part of it. They, they give us a lot of heck. They tell us when we're doing wrong and what we're doing right. And it's been great. The council has, I think, has done a good job.
Oh, we're done.
Okay, Mr. Rabino, I have two questions here. What is your plan for establishing a future town hall? To continue to rent, purchase land, build, other? Or should the town be spending money at this time to build a town hall? Where else could the money be used? Yeah, where else could the money be used? So, those are two questions kind of on the same thing.
Well, the one, one of the questions has already been answered. We've, we've been given a chunk of land by the county. We have the money in place, I think, now. We have a half million dollars. We're building a park, and in that land also is a space donated to be built, a town hall. Our next step would be to get a architect and an engineer to draw up some plans so we can see what we're going to do. We have a preliminary sketch of what we would like to do for a town hall. Get that drawn up, see how much that would cost, bring it out, see what the cost to build that would be. We have been putting away money every year for a building fund to build a town hall. So, the money is there, and it's in place, most of it. So, I would like to see us just continue on doing what we're doing. Proceed with our plan to go ahead and get the, the architect, engineer, design the building, look for the price, see if it's a feasible price to build with, with the money that we have, and go ahead and put a town hall up, right there at the park, where we, we can't do a better job with free land than, than that.
Like Dan said, the one question was answered as far as where to put a town hall. And thanks to Rick, really, and his due diligence of our staff, we now have almost 40 acres on Valkyria Road that belong to this town right now. We have the deed, it's ours. And we got a half a million dollars that us, the residents, voted on to have a park built several years ago. It was that, there was a referendum for that, and that money just sat there. So, we have that money now. And how exciting is that, to, to build a park? It's our own park, and we can, it's wonderful. And to be on the ground up from that is truly a great thing. And I think we're all gonna get very excited and look forward to that. As far as the town hall, I am for having our own town hall. It's gonna be a project, it's definitely a project. Like Dan said, you know, we have to, the price, you know, we've been putting the money away. We've had a diligent town administrator that's been putting the money to the side. We're spending a lot of money in rent, and when we look at the numbers, it makes, it makes business sense for a government, for a town, to have their own town hall. The money that goes to rent is enormous, and it's only gonna keep going up, and we have nothing, nothing to show for it. And where our town hall is located, you know, a storm comes through here, and we're in big trouble because we're right on US 1. And there's, there's nothing here in town. We, we've been through that, we've been down that road, about where we can rent. And there just isn't anything available in this town. So, the smart thing was to try to build our own town hall. Again, I don't think we're gonna jump into the frying pan on it. We're gonna do our due diligence, and we're gonna take our time. We're gonna make sure it's done right at the least expensive way that we can, the safest way that we can, and that's what we'll do. Thank you.
And that question was, again, I'll make sure I answer it.
What is the most important, okay, I'm sorry, it's number 11. What is your plan for establishing a future town hall? Continue to rent, purchase land, build, other? Should the town be spending the money at this time to build the town hall? Should it be spent somewhere else?
Okay. No, I concur with the council's plan to build the town hall on the donated land. We've saved a lot of money because we were given the land, and we have saved the money to build the town hall. Renting, in my opinion, is not as smart as owning. We pay about $30,000, $28,000 a year in rent. Rick ran the numbers for us, I think. He thinks that the insurance and the maintenance on the, on a building will be, won't be half that. So, we'll, you know, $15,000 we'll have free and clear, that we, we pay out now. And to me, rent is just throwing money away, you don't get anything in return. Like Kathy said, it's smart business sense. That building, it leaks, the staff covers our file cabinets with plastic over the weekend because they're afraid that roof's gonna cave in and ruin our records. And that would be a horrible thing to have all our town records ruined. So, we, and if a storm comes through, that building is not, it's just a metal building with stucco on the outside. It's not, it's like a shed. So, it's not a really good, sturdy building. So, it's, it's time. In our town... In our town, we want a permanent, every town has a permanent town hall, and to me, it's important, because it's the people's building. And we're going to involve so many volunteers, it's, people, it's going to belong to you. You're going to feel it's your place, that you built, that you selected the design, you, it's yours, it's the town's. Rick is working to keep the cost down by volunteers and donations. He's working very hard. So, I concur with the plan, and the money, if we wouldn't build a town hall, I suppose we would keep the money for roads and emergencies.
It's always a better idea to own than rent. I agree with Lizette. You know, you're throwing your money away if you're renting. I think it's a great location for the park. I'm not sold on the location for town hall. I kind of feel like it should be in the heart of the town, which is kind of in this area here, for me. I'd like to see the town hall close to the boat ramps, and right there on US-1, so people can see the town hall, and they know when they're driving by the town hall. That's just my opinion. I know the land's free, but there are other options that are out there. So, I say move forward with the park, and let's discuss the town hall a little bit more. I've seen the drawings of the town hall. They're beautiful. So, the idea of what it's going to look like is awesome, and it fits what the town is all about. Location?
What is the most important issue that the town will face in the next year, in your opinion?
I think probably the biggest challenge we have is the way the state of our economy is. Everyone, I think, is pretty much aware of that. We don't know what's going to happen in the next year. So, I think probably the biggest challenge we have right now is remaining financially solvent, and being fiscally responsible for the town. And fortunately, we have a wonderful town administrator that helps us do that, and a very diligent town council and mayor that looks at all that. We have a good budget going. When I first took office on the town council, we were all, of course, volunteer, we didn't have a town administrator, so we all had to do little jobs, and one of my jobs was paying the bills and maintaining the books, and I know how hard that is. You know, it's hard enough to do it in your own household, let alone for a town. And fortunately, it wasn't for very long, but I really got a good perspective of what it is to try to make things work with the little bit of money that you have. And so, I think that is the, you know, the biggest challenge for us, with, like I say, with the way the times are right now, in this great country of ours, but we have to continue to be financially solvent. So, it's a job. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Kathy, that that is a major issue, to make sure we stay within our budget, and have to deal with any ups and downs in our tax valuation. Right now, Rick says it went up slightly. It seems like the markets are moving up a little, you know, things are looking better. I'm optimistic. I know, I totally trust Rick to manage that budget, so, I mean, we've done so well in these really bad times, that as times get better, I think we'll be fine. Our biggest, I guess our biggest challenge to manage is the building of that town hall. We may, you know, we may look at it, we may decide not to do it, for whatever, when we get bids for what the building would look like. It depends on how much it costs. We, like Kathy said, we're not going to do anything crazy, just to build the town hall. We will take our time and make sure that's the right thing to do. But I think that's going to be the, one of the big things. And again, the land development regulations will be a big chore, to slog through those and get that, and I encourage everyone to participate in that. So, I think, I think things are looking up. I think, I'm optimistic, and since we have Rick, I think we'll do fine. As long as we have Rick, we've got to keep him around. But the council, the council is also very fiscally responsible, I'm going to tell you that right now. No one here is spending, you know, likes to spend money, your money. So, we will work very hard to do that right.
Again, we've got, I mean, the economy, wow. Could it get any worse? I don't think it could. I think a lot of people are holding back for the elections. I think after the elections, we'll see a surge. Whether or not that surge holds, that's the question. I don't know if it can, right now. What the town really needs to work on is, you know, protecting our property values, and in doing things to strengthen the infrastructure, attracting more businesses, put more people to work. I mean, we have to support the tax base. That's what it's all about, and that's what I'm going to strive towards, is supporting the tax base and the infrastructure of the town.
I would have to go along with Lizette and Kathy about our, keeping our budget sound, and keeping our bills and everything under control, keeping everything as we have so far. We've been very frugal with everything. We've been able to put away money for a town hall, but, like I said, we won't proceed with a town hall, spending that kind of money, until we know, get some prices and stuff, and see if we can afford it. And if we can't afford it, we will hold off until we can. But being fiscally sound is one of our major, major things, to keep our, everything balanced, and our budgets balanced. That's, I think, is one of our major goals for the town, so that the town always has the money to do if there's an emergency or anything like that, so we have our finances in order, so that we can take care of all those kind of things.
This question was for the two men, but I think I like this one better. It's pretty much the same. Voters can only choose three of you. Why do you think you should be elected or re-elected as a town council member? And this goes to Ms. Kohler.
Okay, I have a listen here. Okay, why should folks vote for me, right? Okay, all right. Well, I bring direct experience from forming the town, from being on the council for four years, and for helping it get on its feet. I, you know, was a pretend town administrator, helping Mr. Mayor get going. So, I bring a lot of experience. And other than Kathy, obviously, she's also been on the council for six years, right? So, I'm the type of person, I guess I'm a junkie on this stuff. I keep up with the county, the state, and federal actions that might affect the town. I'm always reading about what's going on outside the town, so that if it affects us, and I always let Rick know, and they, you know, follow through. So, that's something that I think I bring. I attended the League of Cities with Mr. Mayor. I attended the League of Cities, again, because I like, I think we don't, we don't live in a little, our own little world. There is a world around us, and sometimes things affect us. You know, Palm Bay affects us, the county affects us, so we kind of have to keep an eye on what they're doing. I think I'm a good leader, I think. I've been in leadership roles a lot. I've worked with the county staff, state representatives, county commission, like I said, way back since 2004. I have a flexible schedule, I can attend all kinds of meetings during the day. I focus on communicating and informing the residents. I don't have all the answers, so I like to talk to people to help me come up with them. I try to bring a big-picture conservative. We have Mr. Mayor over here, who's Mr. Detail, but I like, I'm kind of like the big picture, and then he steps in. So, we work together real well. And I'm active, I'm like, I'm always doing something, I'm always thinking up things for the town. It's just very important to me, and I'm proactive. I try to get things done before they, you know, before they bite us, I guess. But, okay. I do, I'm just very dedicated, and I enjoy what I do, and I enjoy meeting and talking to all of you. So, I'm just a very energetic person, and I think that, and I do bring a different point of view most of the time.
Vote for me, because I'm the new kid on the block. I want to liven it up a little bit. I want to get more people involved in the town. I've been to some town meetings. They put the OR in boring. I'd like to see some life on the council and in this town. I'd like to bring my vision to the table for the town. And I just want to fight for that causeway. I mean, who's standing up on a pedestal right now, asking for that causeway? Is it Maziotti? I mean, he's the one that really should be crying for it. Nobody's crying for it, but maybe if I get on town council, I'll be heard just a little bit, and get the ball rolling, because I really believe that if people knew that that federal money has come and gone, as many times it has for that causeway, that people, 90% of the people are going to support that. So, I have a vested interest with the store, obviously, for the town. I love the town. I'm a product of Brevard, I've been here forever. I'm good for the town. That's why you should vote for me.
Well, I've been active with the town since the town was formed. I've been, as I said, I've been on the planning and zoning board since the beginning, and prior to that, when we had our first town manager, I used to work with him, even then, repairing roads from the day the town was formed and everything. I volunteer for this town, to do everything for this town. I'm kind of dedicated to town, to the whole town, to the, not only that, but to the community club, and to the community itself as a whole. I like to see this town continue to develop. I've been working with it as long as I can, and I will continue to do so. I have, I am retired, so I have all the free time in the world to be at all our meetings and everything. I go to almost every county, I think I've attended almost, just about every town council meeting, and every one of my meetings, I've never missed a planning and zoning board meeting. So, I think I'm very well qualified for the job. I've been working hard at it for as long as the town's been around. So, vote for me, so vote for the town.
Well, as I said before, I've been on the council since the inception for six years, and I feel like I've done a good job. I've tried my best. I bring a lot forward from residents, I'll mention things. I fight for the residents. I'm a nurse by trade for over 35 years, so I'm used to a lot of adversity in dealing with doctors, so I don't, don't let too many people push me around too much. So, I, as the council knows, I speak my mind when I have something to say. But I'm practical about it, too, because I have to deal with what's in front of me. And I have to, if one thing this has taught me is to put my own feelings and my own opinions to the side, and put that to the side, what's best for the town, what's in front of me, what is the right decision for this town and for the residents? And that's what you have to do. It teaches you a lot of self-control, and a lot of diligence, and I feel I've done that over the six years, but I feel like there's still a lot more for us to do. And I feel with four more years, that's a good 10 years to help build this town. I want to make it so future town council, past that 10 or 15 years, doesn't have to go backwards, and fix a bunch of stuff that we did wrong. I want to make sure everything is done right. And I think we've learned so much over the years, and we've made mistakes. We, every single one of us will admit to that. But we've corrected those mistakes, and we've moved forward with it, and we've learned from it, and we've grown from it. And with that experience, I feel like I can help move forward with the town, and keep us the way we are, and keep us financially sound, and I will continue to do the best I can for everyone. Thank you.
This is, I think, the last question, because it's getting kind of late. Mr. Posar, and this, you want, interesting, this is a snoozer. What is your opinion on Florida Property Tax Amendment Number Four? And if it passes, what effect do you see it having on the town?
I don't know how many of you are familiar with Amendment Four. It's for first-time homebuyers, and it protects their taxes. Their taxes can't be raised for the first five years that they own the home. That's basically what Amendment Four is about. I'm for it. You know, first-time homebuyers need all the help they can get. It also, they can't have any assessments on them for the first five years, they can't raise their taxes for five years. When somebody first buys a home, they're overwhelmed for the first five years, till they get adjusted. I'm pro Amendment Four. I think it's good for the area, I think it's good for the real estate market, I think it's great. I mean, how couldn't you like Amendment Four? I'm pro Amendment Four.
Well, I think you better read Amendment Four very closely. Amendment Four is going to take, cut taxes for people, but it's only people from out of our state who buy a second home will get that tax break. It won't help you, and it won't help me. It'll take the people who own large portions of undeveloped land, and such as developers and stuff, and give them a tax break on their undeveloped land, so that your taxes will have to cover what they don't have, what they don't collect. It doesn't, it doesn't do anything for you personally. It, only thing it's going to do to help you is maybe raise your taxes, because they're going to cut taxes for other people who are not even living in this state, or for people who have large land and developers who are sitting on top of money, waiting for that land to be sold. One of the other things that it does, and if you read it closely, new businesses, if you start a new business, you're going to be taxed more than a person who has a business already established. And if you develop your business and want to expand your business, they're going to tax you more for expanding your business. You're going to pay a higher tax rate than a business that is already there. So, it's going to discourage people from starting businesses, and that's not what we need. We need people to be encouraged. It should be the other way around. They should be lowering the taxes for the people who want to start a new business, and who want to expand their business. But that's not what they're going to do. They're going to increase the tax rate for those people. I mean, Amendment Four looks very nice on paper, when you read the short things, you know, and it's not, that's not what it says. You have to read it very carefully, and look at that amendment. Now, it says, yeah, it's going to lower the taxes for first-time buyers. First-time buyers from out of state, that's who it's going to lower the taxes for. And in the long run, what it's going to do is tuck the tax revenue that the people in the little towns like ours get from those houses, because now we won't be able to get our tax revenue, because they lowered the tax rate.
I do feel there's pros and cons with Amendment Four, and like Dan said, I've read it myself. I think the problem with it is that while it keeps their taxes from going up for five years, it doesn't keep everybody else that lives in the town from going up. And I think when you have that stationary like that, then it's only going to raise taxes for everyone around you. So, right now, I'm not supportive of Amendment Four.
I'm not going to go over it again, but I agree with Dan and Kathy, I'm not supportive of it. I think it makes something that's already unfair, even unfairer. It just adds more rigmarole, you know, more bureaucracy you have to keep track of. In the end, it will reduce the revenue for our town, and increase, you know, everyone's taxes, because hopefully, you know, if we lose the revenue from the first-time buyers and the people from out of state, guess where else it's going to come from? So, I'm not in favor of it, and it's a pro-development amendment, I believe. I mean, the whole state now, the whole government, the whole legislature is pro-development. That's the only, that's the main way Florida gets revenue, is develop, 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 and that's why we incorporate it, to stop development, 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 at least stop it the way we don't want it. So, I don't, actually, all the amendments that the legislature is proposing, I'm not happy with at all, and especially because they're proposing it. So, no, I do not support Amendment Four.
Well, the time has come for the closing comments. The candidates will state their closing comments in the reverse ballot order, beginning with Mr. Robino, and then Mr. Posar, and Ms. Kohler, and Ms. Demott.
I want to state again that my name is Daniel Robino. I have been in this town for 16 years. I'm married, have two sons and five grandchildren. I intend to, I intend to live here for the rest of my life. I like to tell people that my house is what I call my terminal home. I will be there forever. So, I am never going anywhere. This town is my town, and I'm going to stay here with it, until I'm ashes. So, I will be serving it as long as I can. Thank you.
Well, in closing, I'd like to touch on Amendment Four real quick. I disagree with all three. I think everybody should read it, if you haven't read it. I did get the endorsement from the Melbourne Realtors did get the endorsement from the Melbourne Realtors Association because of my knowledge of Amendment Four. So I, touche, back at you. You better read it again. It's really about helping out first-time home buyers. That's the primary focus. So, again, I've been here for forty-two years, sixteen years right here in town. Um, I have a vision for this town. I'd like to see the main corridor of this town knock people's socks off as they're driving around. We need to work on our curbside appeal. So when people are driving through Grant Valkyria, they say, "That is one nice town." And what, what comes from that is everything. People wanna move here. People wanna raise their families here. People wanna bring their businesses here. Everything falls into place from other things. The causeway is a biggie for me. I've said it three times. I'm not gonna beat it into the ground. But, uh, that's what the south, whole south end of Brevard needs. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We're having a resident race here. Okay. We've lived here for sixteen years and I've been in Brevard for fifty. So, and I, I love this town. I love Brevard and I love, I love Florida. And, and I'm here to make, just like Dan and Kathy and, and Chris, we wanna keep this town, uh, ma, the special place that it is. And I have a list of why it's special. Anyway, I wanna thank the Grant Community Club for letting us use the building. The, um, Women, uh, League of Women Voters, absolutely. Thank you very much. Our town staff and our great volunteers, those ladies are always there when you need them. So I wanna thank them. Um, and thank you all. Your participation is crucial to this government. So thank you very much. And I have very high hopes for our town and mainly because of you, of the people. I've met so many great people, so many talented people that do, that come from all walks of life and have so much to contribute. And the town's gonna have its ups and downs, but there's no doubt in my mind that we will overcome anything and flourish because of our people and our ideas. I'm offering to continue serving as your representative on this council. I am for a bright future for our town and for it becoming a model town for the way life should be lived, the way life you, the way you wanna live life. Um, if, I have a list here of the things that, that what I call jewels of the town. I'm gonna read them as quick as I can. All right? The, 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 the lagoon, we have three creeks, we have protect, protected land, we have a golf course, we have the airport, we have historical sites, we have three big festivals, we have a scenic highway, we have an equestrian community, we have riverfront parks, we have a new community park, we have agriculture, tropical garden, trails, three boat ramps, marinas, a school, churches, cemeteries, unique businesses, industrial and research companies, library and riverfront restaurants. And the very, uh, very last is an island, a residential island. So talk about being special. All right? And all this, and we all live on these big, huge lots surrounded by beautiful nature. So I can't help but be excited about Grant Valkyria. I'm more than happy to take my turn again on the council and hope you'll help me do that. But I'd like to see you, many of you take your turn. Let's keep this town team Grant Valkyria and all work toward our common goals.
How can I top that? I mean, really? Jeez, you know? Should I say ditto? I'm telling you. Um, you got me going now. As I said before, I still feel there's a lot for us to do. And, um, I, I've already explained my passion for this town, coming from South Florida. Um, I wanna keep it the way it is. Um, I just, I just wanna keep doing what we're doing. And, um, I also wanna maintain the integrity of our charter, you know? One thing I didn't mention before was in our charter, we, we stated there's no, there will be no revenue bonds, there will be no borrowing money. And I wanna make sure that that stays, that we don't do that. Because I came from towns that do that and all kinds of municipal bonds. And we don't wanna do that. And this council and town administrator have done an awesome job of doing that. And I wanna make sure we keep doing that. Um, I think I've proven my, my integrity, my dedication, my honesty to this town in the last six years. And I'm willing to keep putting those hours in and doing the best, very best I can. I'm, you know, still gonna listen to you guys and you tell me how you feel and I'll bring it to the council. Um, I have no problem doing that. I wanna continue, like I said, to make the responsible spending decisions. And I also wanna help, you know, the funding and, and finding more funding for our town. I think we, we tried to do that. We looked into grants for the, the park, for the playground equipment, things like that. Um, but I'll always make, you know, the diligent effort to listen to your issues and do the best we can. I think every single council member has done that. We bring forward what you want us to do. And if it's possible for us to do it within the legalities of the state, that's what we'll do. And I hope you'll support me. Thank you.
Okay. In conclusion, I would like to thank the audience for, and the, uh, candidates for your participating, patient. And remember to vote on November the sixth. Thank you.
I wanted to thank the town staff for, uh, helping set this up and, and making sure we're, we're able to participate this evening. And thanking Barbara Jugrowski for moderating for us. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And, and most importantly, the candidates had some, I thought we had excellent questions. So I wanted to thank them for being here and thank you guys for providing those questions so they had, uh, some difficult things to answer. So thank you. Good night.